All right, we're gonna get started. Sorry we're a little late here. Um, I'll rise and say a pledge.
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll get along here by spotlight school.
Thank you. We are very pleased to bring to you our award-winning Family and Consumer Sciences program with some of our wonderful students. Let's turn it over to Mrs. Janelle Paxton.
Good evening, I'm the Family and Consumer Sciences Department Chair, and we took over the Cadet teaching program back in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen school year after Tom Ellsworth retired, and we have changed it into Education Professions. We've had many dual credit classes through this program, and we currently have nine teachers in our school district that have gone through the program with me as the teacher. One of them is my coworker Kaylee Bowman. Um, she returned to teach with us at the high school. Here are some of the things I received back when I sent a survey out to those teachers and what they said about the course. What was your favorite moment from Education Professions? My favorite moment was the first lesson I had to teach as a Cadet teacher. I don't remember the lesson clearly, but I remember the feeling of nervous excitement and then relief when it went okay. Another question I asked was what is one thing from the Ed Professions class that helped you as a teacher? It prepared me well for my field experience in college. It gave me insight into what kinds of tasks I would need to have to step up and do to get the best real-life experiences. I don't know if I would have been confident enough to start those tasks in my first field experience in college right away if I hadn't gotten those experiences in high school. And the third question I asked is how has it had an influence on your career choice? I think it is one of the most valuable parts of my high school career. It gave me a chance to see if teaching was the career pathway I wanted to do. The guidelines of the course made it so that I wasn't just a teacher's helper, but I got to teach lessons and work with small groups of students, and let me see all sides of teaching, the good and the not-so-good. The ability to work with and be mentored by such great teachers was invaluable. After two years of Education Professions, it confirmed that teaching was what I wanted to do as a career choice. Now I'm gonna turn it over to some of our wonderful students that are currently in our education pathway at the high school. Let them introduce themselves and tell you what level they're at and what they have for you to share tonight.
Hello, I'm Sophia Thompson, a junior here at Greenfield Central. Today I'm gonna talk about the importance of the educational pathway. We all know what education is. Acquiring knowledge, skills, and character traits can help us in our adult lives. But what if it's more than that? What if we as teachers aren't just here to teach students? This educational program has taught me to realize what a teacher truly is. Our caregivers, friends, therapists, most of all, a place to call home. Ms. Powell, Ms. Kaish, and Ms. Bowman all have taught me one extremely important principle. A teacher doesn't just have the mindset to teach. We have the mindset to make a strong enough connection so that a student wants to come back to school each and every day. The personalities, the laughter, and the achievements along the way is what truly helps us to say, this is why I became a teacher. I'm gonna pass out two different things. The first thing is a the first thing is a little booklet that I made my sophomore year in Principles of Teaching, the first class you take in the education pathway, titled My Preschoolers. While in this class, students get the opportunity to get hands-on work experience, and our classes ranged from preschool to sixth grade. I was assigned two figure cups where I spent an hour with preschoolers. Although I often spent most of my time just playing with them, I learned a lot all along the way. The amount of patience, positive energy, and crazy personalities you experience along the way is what truly made my experience there shine. The second item I gave you is a binder from a child adolescent development class, the second class you take in the pathway. This binder was from a month-long project we were assigned. We created a detailed week as a teacher full of a physical, art, circle time, language arts, science or math, and a snack activity for a preschool class. We would create activities narrowing down to one theme picked by the student. I chose dinosaurs. Every single activity in this binder is narrowed down to one thing relating to a dinosaur. While this project definitely took a very long time for me to do, the students enjoyed a really positive learning experience and felt like a real teacher. Teaching is so extremely important to me, and I never would have had this experience without this program. I now feel so confident that the teaching is everything I want to do in life. And while people may say, what about the pay? Or why would you wanna spend more time in a classroom with children? They don't understand that it's more than that. Students in this program, including myself, are able to experience what a teacher truly means and does and the effect they have on their students. There's only one word to describe what this program has taught me what a teacher truly is. Teacher is a hero.
Okay, uh, hi, my name is Isabel Atchak. I am a junior at Greenfield Central High School. And today I just wanna express with you some things that I have learned through the education pathway. And not only the things I've learned, but the ways that I have grown to have a passion for teaching. So today I have with me a lesson box that we were assigned in my child and adolescent development class, which is year two. And we got to make a lesson box for a week's worth of preschool, for a preschool classroom. We were asked to choose a theme, much like Sophia explained, and I chose on the form. Now, by creating this lesson box, I got to use the skills that I had learned from the past two years. And I wanna present to you one of the lessons that I got to do. Um, so in preschool, they are not quite counting backwards from ten yet. But, uh, in many ways that we got to learn some skills that we learned in the classroom, we're able to apply those skills to be able to help them to do this. So, um, by having these little barns, which is related to my theme, uh, there's a little barn animal inside, um, and you would place all the numbers out in a line and have them, by being able to identify the number on the barn, they would be able to place it in there and say, ten. And then they would go to the next one, and do nine, eight, and then down the line. Um, and yes, by using the skills that they have already learned, they can also help us develop a new skill. So that's something I learned. Um, now, I'm gonna be completely honest. Uh, my freshman year and before that, I had no intentions of really ever becoming a teacher. I really wanted to go to the medical field. Um, and so my sophomore year, I had an open block in my schedule. And I was like, well, I really like being with kids, so why not give it a try? And after the first few weeks, I just knew like, oh, like this is something I could be interested in. This is something that maybe I could do. Um, and what really confirmed that desire to be a teacher was getting to go in the classroom and getting to do the experience with the kids. The sitting down and doing a lesson with them, or reading a book with them, or just getting to do hands-on lessons was just what really convinced me. And I got the honor of being with my kindergarten teacher and just getting to see the behind-the-scenes work that she did to make it so memorable for me is what convinced me that teaching is exactly what I wanted to do. So, uh, the education pathway took me from really having no desire in teaching to having a passion and a deep understanding to become a teacher one day. So, thank you.
Hello, my name is Aubrey Brewer. I'm a senior this year at Greenfield Central High School. I'm gonna pass around my Education Professions portfolio that I put together last year in the third tier of the education pathway. Um, I don't remember a day where I didn't really want to be a teacher. I've since kindergarten been in the classroom, I was like, I wanna be like my kindergarten teacher. I want to be her. Um, and getting into the high school and finally being able to take classes that were like structured to what I really wanted to do in the future was really important to me. So my freshman year, my two free blocks I had, I loaded up with fax classes, and that's pretty much been my schedule throughout my junior year. I had five fax classes at one point. Um, and Ms. Kaish, Ms. Bowman, and Ms. Powell have all really, really impacted me in my future decisions for wanting to become a teacher. Any talk, any college questions, anything like that, they were there to help. And that really showed me that it's not just about making sure your students understand the curriculum that you need to teach them. It's also about maybe being there in a personal way as well. Um, and I have actually committed to a college this year for teaching, and I don't think I would have done that without the education pathway. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any public comments for the night?
There were no requests for written, and I don't believe anyone signed up this evening.
Move our mouth to routine matter. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting March eleventh, twenty twenty four, and the executive session March eleventh, twenty twenty two?
I move that we accept the minutes of both the regular and executive meetings of March eleven.
Yeah, a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. On to claims.
Yes, in the packet for you this evening are the regular claims, payroll claims, and a construction claim. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about the claims presented. Um, otherwise, I ask that the board approve the claims.
No comments or questions? Can I get a motion to approve claims as presented?
I move to approve the claims as presented.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. All right, on to, uh, hold on, unfinished business, financial matters.
In your packet this month are the actual March receipts and expenditures for the operations and educations fund. Um, education fund is trending well. Um, operations fund expenses a little higher than I wanted to be, so we're gonna continue to work on that, um, try to find some efficiencies. I'm happy to answer any questions about them. Overall, we continue to be in very good financial shape.
No questions, comments? Can I move along to instructions?
Before we do that, on that operations side, you wanted to mention a little bit about some of our custodial.
That's right, I did. Um, so we have been having some issues staffing our custodial and maintenance department. Um, and so we have been, um, working with the company who did the fogging for us back in COVID, which feels like somewhere between four months and forty years ago. It's in that window, um, to provide some, for some extra support in areas where we're short. Um, primarily, it's cleaning. Um, we do have some, some gentlemen who are helping us on the mowing and maintenance side. Um, I think that I'm, I'm willing to dig a little bit more into this and probably come back with a conversation about looking at outsourcing in general, normalizing some of that relationship. Right now, it's kind of an ad hoc. Somebody calls off, we bring in somebody. We're short for a week, we bring in somebody. But there's some, there's definitely some realities between the job market and the available workforce and what we're able to do.
But it has put a little bit of a strain on that operations fund that we would not have foreseen as we're setting the budget for the year.
We've offset it, obviously, with, um, some, some less payroll expense. But, um, you know, it's not a one-for-one, unfortunately.
Would you say that's the primary driver of the expenditures being higher than you?
No, um, I think that we had a couple of emergency pieces come through. I think we're, um, trying to readjust to the reality that we've been spending some cash on some projects that, that we've talked about in here, some deferred maintenance pieces, and we're slowly weaning ourselves off of that expenditure. Um, but that, that is, you know, you know, we're, yeah, this, I think this, this, in this, um, set of claims, we've got about ten percent of our payroll costs is now being, has been shifted over to those services. So those services are, are a pretty decent chunk of that number. Unfortunately, there's certain things that we can put off, and there's certain things that we have to fix. And we've been hit with a couple of things that you gotta fix.
We're confident we'll be okay by, by December. We just wanted to kinda highlight that little shift, little change, at least.
Yeah, and, you know, we're using a little bit of extra electricity on the construction project, you know. It's, it's continuing to find those efficiencies on both the, the people side, the project side, but, but also the utility side. Keep moving forward on some of our utility projects as well, so.
All right, I may want to, um, instructional, uh, program report.
You should gonna let Mr. Marine talk a little bit about the math adoption process we've been in in the last year and a half?
So we have a couple of items tonight on the instructional report. So the first one, as Dr. Owen mentions, is the math materials adoption. So back again, talking about the, um, the math materials. The, uh, approved list from IDOE has not been yet released, so we're still waiting on that. Uh, however, as mentioned last month, there, we do have verbal confirmation, so we're seeking, um, approval for us to, um, go ahead and adopt the math materials.
We even have written the communication.
Let's see, we're not jumping the gun here. Can I get a motion to approve the math materials as we did, as presented?
I move that we approve the math materials adoption as presented. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Uh, the second item on the instructional report is the Walker Career Center, and I'll probably let you speak on it.
There, a long tradition of being a part of Walker Career Center. They've done a nice job of keeping their costs low, and obviously, we do offer some CTE courses at Greenfield Central High School. We send our students to, to Mount Vernon for one. But a vast majority of our CTE work, uh, off-site would be at Walker Career Center. Technically, it's the fax program, many of those technically meet the CTE requirement. But, uh, as we have to do to continue that, that partnership, we have to have an agreement that is approved by the board on an annual basis. There's no changes, uh, versus what you would have seen in previous years. So our recommendation would be that, uh, we move forward with approving that, that partnership.
I have no question, comments? Can I get a motion to approve Walker Career Center Technical Education Programs operating agreement twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five, and give authority to the school board president to sign on behalf of Greenfield Central Community School Corporation?
Make a motion that we approve the Walker Career Center and Technical Education Programs operating agreement for twenty four, twenty five. I give authority to the school board president to sign on behalf of the Greenfield Central School Corporation.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye.
Thank you. Third item on, uh, the report is, uh, just an update on iRead three, on what's happening right now. So, uh, in March, all of our, uh, third graders and second graders this school year participated in iRead three testing. So we've notified all the families that, uh, of students who, uh, did not pass that assessment, both second and third grade, and are now preparing for our summer school instruction. Uh, so we have, uh, identified a, uh, list of third-grade students and a list of second-grade students who we're inviting to summer school, and we are working together to put that together right now. The official, um, the final results won't be available until after our summer administration.
So I'll interject. It's odd in that we've communicated with families about how their, their children have done, but the collective results are embargoed for a while. We've been fortunate, as you look back over the last three or four years, we've, we've been over ninety percent each year. Uh, last year, we were at ninety-one percent. Hey Ted, we are a couple percent below where we were last year, though, uh, we're not overly concerned. We're gonna use these last eight, nine weeks, uh, after break, six weeks left to continue to intervene where students have some gaps. We'll provide that, the two weeks over the summer, that opportunity of retest again. And if ever reason to believe, we'll be somewhere where we've been in the past. It was unique, having half of our elementary school students testing. You know, for many years, it's just been a fourth of that population. Well, it was technically, literally, half of the student population. We had a number of teachers who had never given standardized testing before that had to step into that arena. So we got good results from, from our second grade, um, higher than what that, that state average is. But it will actually allow us to target our work a little bit more that entire third-grade year, knowing where some of those deficiencies are. So we're pretty happy about having that opportunity to do that.
Do those results get released in a breakdown of second versus third grade?
They do, they come separate.
And if, you said we invited the second-grade students to participate in the summer program.
Summer school, which would be the first time for that opportunity.
And if, if they do, and take it in their third-grade year and need to then come back in, after third grade for that summer program, are they able to do that as well, if they were to need that?
But the second-grade students, we'll offer them the remediation, but they can't retest.
Okay.
That's only for third-grade students that will be able to retest. Ms. Leclair, have they're right?
Yeah.
Correct.
But if they do go to third grade, take it and don't pass, they could go to summer school and take it again at the end of that summer session.
And obviously, the big thing at the General Assembly this year about third graders who don't pass, that mandatory retention does not impact this class of twenty twenty four, but it would impact us for next year. And I believe we had just one other item there?
The last piece on there is, uh, is causing quite the buzz. So, uh, this is the early literacy endorsement that everybody's talking about right now. So, uh, this is a new requirement that will take place for new teachers in twenty twenty, uh, uh, sorry, after June thirtieth in twenty twenty five, or current teachers after July first, twenty twenty seven. So basically, teachers will have to, uh, attain this literacy endorsement before they can renew their license. And the way they can do that is earning eighty hours of professional development in the science of reading. Uh, that's approved by the IDOE and taken past the Praxis test. So, uh, there's quite the requirements there, which eighty hours is, is a lengthy requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, right now, IDOE is offering, um, some training for free. That's good for one year, up to a year for right now. And, uh, there's a twelve-hundred-dollar stipend that comes along with that if, if educators can complete that. And they're gonna pay a voucher to, uh, give a voucher to pay for the practice test. That's only up until Ju-, through June of next year. So, uh, after that, then educators will have to do that on their end. Um, there are a handful of licenses that, that this does affect, and those are in the report there.
We'll tell you, the DOE opened up some, some training opportunities over the summer today at nine o'clock, which is odd since we started iLearn today. But the, the site did get blown up, so there's great interest throughout the, the state. People wanting to, to get the, the training out of the way. But it is creating a little bit of stress right now.
I had a tear for a while because it was down. I thought I missed the opportunity, and then it came back up later, so I went from being sad to being happy, so I'm a happy man. So yes, I can, if you wanna talk about signing up for it, I've been through the process. Cross your fingers.
That's all we had on the instructional report for you.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the construction project updates.
Just shared a few updated photos for you. I know a few of you have had an opportunity to walk that site in the last couple of weeks. As those pictures will show you, uh, we've really come a long way in pouring the concrete flooring down the middle of the auditorium. That's the last of that underground HVAC pipe work in that picture behind you there, at least in that, that bottom third, which did start to put in some of the HVAC work under, or at least the, the duct work underneath the stairs in that picture. Right, go ahead and advance there. A little bit more toward the, well, getting out of that auditorium shell, just showing they were actually starting to get drywall up quite a few places in the hallways and restrooms, and starting to lay the, the tile in, in the restroom areas. Next picture, please. It's kinda showing you the back portion of the auditorium where we have all the steps poured at this, this point. And then just taking shape with the, the metal studs where we don't quite have the, that's going into the, the auditorium where we don't have the, the drywall up yet. But that's changing by day. We're getting quite a bit more of that, that drywall up. So when you walk in there, you can really picture what that auditorium space looks like. And then that last picture, this would be just north of the gymnasium. In that drywall, you actually have the, the trough for the LED lighting that will be out there. So it's really come a long way. Obviously, uh, we had shown you last month a lot of the, the changes on the east side with the, the glass exterior, uh, most of that in place at this point.
Yeah, um, most of the glass is in place. If you drive by, you'll notice three or four sections of plywood where we're still waiting on some glass, and also the ability to take that down and, you know, put some big pieces of materials through that without, you know, impacting that area. Uh, they're, they're really trying to dry that area and, uh, put the roof on that so we can continue on the drywall. And hopefully, we'll start to see the, uh, the last few pieces of precast be flown in here soon.
Those panels on the north end, we're real close on that end.
I'll tell you, if you haven't had, if you haven't had a chance to tour it, these pictures are nice, but it doesn't do it at all to what it really looks like. It's a pretty impressive facility.
Still on the, the timeline to be done, uh, likely in October, around fall break time. But if you do wanna tour, you've got some time, you know, drop what we, drop what we're doing to get you in there to see it.
It's pretty impressive that it is.
All right.
And we hate, we hate going in.
Yeah.
Let me see, I think it was Nate that just wanted to talk about every, yeah.
I was young pajamas over there.
Yeah, I thought about it. It's been a little cold.
Wet.
Toby has a little wet.
Mr. Strong, I think you had something for us.
Yes, we do. There's, in your packet, it was an assignment of lease. Crossroad Family Farms has leased our, some of our land up in Maxwell. And if they get financing to operate their business, they are required to, uh, sign that lease to the, the bank over in Illinois where they do their financing. So we need to approve that since our contract with them does not allow them to sign their lease. But this would be, uh, the recommendation is you adopt that to the point either yourself or Dr. Owen to sign.
Any questions with this, or?
We need a motion for us to approve that, right?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, can I get a motion to approve the farm lease as presented and give authorization to either the board president or Dr. Owen to sign?
Make a motion that we adopt the leases presented and give board president or Dr. Owen permission to sign on our behalf.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Thank you, Mr. Strong.
Thank you.
And on to new business, uh, business information.
Thank you. We have three, uh, donations this month. First, the corporation received eight hundred and fifty dollars from, uh, the following donors. Paxson Farms Sweet Corn, fifty dollars. Cynthia's Choice Inc., a hundred dollars. JKES, uh, Smith Projects, a hundred dollars. Chicago's Pizza on Tap, five hundred dollars, and Costco, a hundred dollars. Um, and that's eight hundred and fifty dollars. It's going to go to the Special Olympics Unified Champions Project. Um, the high school received a donation of six thousand dollars from Bashan Solutions for use for the Vex Robotics team to offset their travel expenses to the world championships. And the high school also received a donation of three thousand dollars from the National FFA Lilly Grant for use by the agricultural department to expand course offerings. Uh, the total amount of these donations is nine thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, and I ask the board to approve them as presented.
Yeah, can I get a motion to approve the grants and donation as presented?
I move that we approve the grants and donations as presented.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. On to out-of-state overnight field trips.
Just a few of them for you. Uh, speaking of that Vex Robotics trip, that's one that they didn't know that they would qualify for until recently, but they do have requested to go to Dallas, Texas. We also have, uh, cheer coach Kristy Carey requesting to take the team to team camp at Purdue in July. Janelle Kaish, who was just here this evening, asking to take some FCC LA chapter members to the National Leadership Conference in June. And the last one, uh, one that's been pretty common, our cross-country team going to a state park. It's a little different setting, but a state park, Lincoln State Park in Spencer County in, uh, July. My recommendation is that the board approve these trips as presented.
Can I motion to approve these overnight out-of-state trips as presented?
I move we approve the out-of-state, uh, trips as presented.
Second?
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. On to contract recommendations and resignations, leaves, and retirements.
Leave of absence, Katie Hall, Brittany Selkey, certified resignations. Kristen Newland, Carly Owen, Sandy Powell, Kendra Springer. On that next page, certified retirements. Susanna Coleman, Scott Kern. Administrator recommendation, David Beal. ECA recommendation, Jacob Garrison. ECA resignations from Jennifer Johnston and Josh McIntyre. And summer school recommendations for Shannon Dick and Christine Salie. Ask that the board approve those recommendations as presented and provide opportunities to hire as needed prior to the next regular scheduled board member. Of course, we'd bring those to you at that next meeting.
Can I get a motion to approve the, um, report as presented, the personnel report as presented? Sorry about that.
I move that we approve the personnel report as presented and offer hiring as needed.
Yeah, second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. On to women out of unit coaching first reading.
First reading for you, you have recommendations for women's basketball, men's basketball, cheerleading, women's swimming, men's swimming, and wrestling. It's first reading. You also have reports from our athletic directors at the high school It's first reading. You also have reports from our athletic directors at the high school and junior high summaries of those seasons. If you have any questions about that, certainly, uh, please reach out to me, ask questions about that. It would be my plan to bring that back to you for a second reading next month.
Thank you. All right, on to future business update, our business important dates, regular school board meeting Monday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Uh, commencement, June first, twenty twenty four. Future topics, classified certified staff handbooks. If we don't have any other general discussion, can I get a motion to approve to adjourn the meeting?
Your motion, wager.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say aye. Thanks, everyone.